Okay, second pass here with new agenda. I did try to move a few things around to give the time to the top, to the items that I expected to take the most time. Tonight, we're gonna continue to discuss the ends and developing the ends. Talk about and figure out where we are with the policy 2.6 asset protection in the tie to the charter. The board's self-evaluation process and contract acceptance for Sean McMahon. First approval of the minutes for April 4, 12, and 25?
Four ten and twenty-five.
Sorry, four ten, four ten and twenty-five. And accept a motion to accept a minutes.
I just have two things, and it's me as the secretary. But on the April 25th meetings, it should just be held under the motion to go into executive session and the motion to adjourn that they were both for all. Everything else is there.
Okay. All right. Anything else? And accept a motion to accept a minutes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Right.
Community engagement, any public comments? Jen, anything from the WEA?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Ends development then. So I got some, a bunch of feedback. Jay passed along a couple of items. I got one from Ange from the Orange Supervisory. But before we get into discussing that, I think the first question in here is how do we move forward to develop the ends? I'd like to have a five or 10 minute discussion just on that point itself. Good thoughts?
I can tell you this, I had a community learning conversation last...
Last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday, I believe. And the 12 individuals that showed up, I had two members of the community and about 10 or 11 parents. And they had a lot to say. And it was, it was really a good conversation that was had between members of the partnership and members of the community. And I know that that being 1% of our total parent population or less of the whole school, it's not representative. I guess moving forward, I think we need more of that. We need more input from our ownership, which is members of the community, our taxpayers, our parents, and even our students. And this whole implementation team and the partnership change, the students have had some tremendous thoughts that have really made me every once in a while, oh wow. You know, I never would've thought of that. So I guess my thoughts are moving forward that we link with ownership in whatever way possible and as many ways as possible.
My question about the ends is, you know, this is gonna be, will it be also become a working document?
Everything.
Certainly everything's a work document. So everything's a working document, but to, we would lay down a pathway of we want our students to this. You know, do we have a timeline on when we need to establish those ends? Or would it be, would it behoove us to move into a place where we're actually having learning conversations? Or, you know, to mine a little bit more where our community is, or our ownership's thinking about what they want our students graduate with? Or are we looking to the graduation, you know, expectation committee to define that? Or is that just gonna be a piece of it? So I'm sort of thinking, you know, in questions more than anything else of is there a timeline? If it's a working document, it'd seem like there's not really, you know, nothing is always solid. Things are always moving as we gather more information, as we shift. And, you know, what, what is, what are we wanting and when are we wanting it? My question is.
Yep. And I think that that is exactly the discussion we need to have. I think if you listen to what Ange had said over the past four or five meetings, they've been at it for four or five years, and they are still, they're with a set of ends. They appear to be moving toward those ends with all of the folks in the district moving toward those ends. But they've been in a state of refinement, if you will.
Constant refinement. So there is a skeleton of a, you know, there's a framework of that, you know, which I'm, you know, the graduation expectation committee is gonna have some of that. But I was in the learning conversation the night after. You were, so there was maybe 25 parents and community members that had put input in. And I don't know if we have any more than that in terms of voice. But it seemed like we'd wanna build them with our owners.
Yep. So those are really the three. Yep. So those are really the three discussions. Is do we wanna try to put together a rough draft as a skeleton to bring forward when we meet? Or do we wanna go with a blank slate and try to start that discussion from scratch? We can think about, and then the last one obviously is how do we engage? How are we gonna engage the community as we, as we do move forward? What forum do you use to do that? And then I've attached some samples in here to do that too, so.
I think there were seven to 10. And it's more families that had we once that weren't.
Yeah, coming out. That's right.
Yeah, so it was, and yours was a great one. It's nothing together, I think it's about.
It's, it's not, you know, I, I understand it's a, it's a tough thing to do. It's a time-consuming thing to do. But it's, it's not a bad forum where people can be very comfortable and you can gather some great written feedback and verbal feedback over courses and hour and a half. You know, if there's some way we could tie people into that where we could get, you know, grand total 50 or 100 different people plugging in, then you would have a really solid view of what the public is really looking for. Because it was interesting, you know, in the graduation expectations, a lot of the people in my group had no... They thought they were great, but they thought that they didn't go far enough to speak into things like college readiness. And that was, that was pertinent throughout the year. You know, there were discussions of graduation rates and getting our students a diploma and then having them ready for, you know, college and career or whatever their next step in life was gonna be. But it was a very rich conversation. And I'm thinking on a smaller scale of 10 to 15 people at a time, you, you get a very comfortable environment where people can really come forward. And in an hour and a half, we gathered a ton of information.
Who facilitated it?
It was Ryan Mora, who actually came from a proficiency-based learning school in Colorado called Eagle Rock. And Jill Jackbelly, who is our current family school partnership fellow until June, obviously. But parents and community members both really spoke their mind. And it was, but it was, it was just a tremendously rich conversation. So, you know, I, having the board on me and trying to draw people into a large thing, I don't know if it would work as well, I don't know.
Okay, so let's stay with that one, with that one. How do we gather the community? Just thoughts?
I think right now, like I said, we're asking a lot of the community. As far as, Nellie May is asking for graduate expectation, learning conversations. This summer, it sounds like some of those will be a little bit less 'cause the new fellows and everybody will be coming on board. I'm not, I think I liked what you said about kind of meeting the people where they're at, some of the community dinners. I think if we start combining things, the community's going to attend anyway. But I, I think just asking them to attend one more thing. You know, if we work it into, I mean, we have some events coming up here at the school, you know, towards the end of the year. Even if, you know, we start doing these things like bringing it up. One, one of you I know has kids in sports and are at pretty much every single one of these games. Even if you bring it up on a one-on-one or one-on-two basis and just start gathering it that way, 'cause then it'll get people talking. And the more they get to talking, the more they're going to want to, you know, they hear it, they're gonna wanna know more about it, they're going to certainly have an opinion on it. But I, I think asking the community to come out to like one more thing. I know like tomorrow night, we have down at Elm Street, they're having a learning conversation. They're bringing, they went and put flyers in all the doors of the, I believe it's the middle and high school students. And they're just basically throwing pizza out on some tables and asking the parents and the students to come out and talk to them.
Is that the partnership thing?
Yes. Yeah.
It's not necessarily the high school graduation expectations, right? But?
It's the graduation expectations.
Oh, awesome.
That's what's gonna be pitched.
But tomorrow's, they all stayed great.
They didn't pick a good night for this. It's been pointed out. Yep.
Jen, thoughts? Thoughts, that's okay, that's okay. We, we've got time and you got it. Jen, thoughts on how you get the community together?
I think that, you know, taking what Amy said, just maybe even putting together a survey to have at those meetings to be passed out to parents so they can quickly fill out there so that they don't bring them home. And just really, you know, target what's already being done, get the information gathered at those meetings, which go tie all into it anyways. And then, you know, quick surveys that, you know, that can be put out, quickly filled out.
Okay.
And they can be random questions. They don't have to be all the same questions.
What happened, the kindergarten screening is happening on Friday and Monday. And apparently we have like coffee and, you know, Danish shows and stuff, or parents get to know each other. That would be a good time too. Your child's in your kindergarten, what would you like for them to do out of this the next 12 years? Or just something.
I believe you get input.
Yeah, 'cause they can spend it for power.
Especially at the kindergarten.
Right, 'cause they're like, this is a big deal.
What's gonna keep?
On a larger, on a larger scale, I think we as a, as a PACS committee realized that our last big community dinner that we had down at the O'Brien Center, I know a lot of people that were exiting were looking not just for the food, but they were looking for us to pitch something.
They were. And the reason we didn't, we didn't have a microphone, yeah.
On what graduation expectations?
Well, anything, they were looking to hear some information about the school.
Yeah.
And, and it was, you know, it was seeing through our fingers, you know. It was a golden opportunity because there was a lot of people there.
There was a ton of people. And that just.
What forum was this?
We, the PACS committee helped co-host the regular community dinners. Exactly. And, and the only reason was because we didn't foresee needing a microphone and because people were coming in pleasing to be able to get their attention. And so then otherwise it would've been. So I think that, you know, just learning, it's new learning.
So if I'm, if I'm to tie, try to tie some of this conversation together, how would a coordinated effort at a community dinner, even if we have to sponsor it, with that discussion of these are the things that we're trying to do, have a general discussion at that point and take a list of names of folks who would wanna do these learning discussions? Like I think you held one here.
The learning conversations are on the graduation expectations, and that's a Nellie May thing.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to piggyback on the idea of getting people involved with a specific focus in a, I think you mentioned a smaller group rather than, the larger the group, the less, the more input you're gonna get from the fewer people. In general, you're gonna get a lot more input from, but fewer people.
And what was interesting in our learning conversation, and I don't know if this happened with yours or Tori, but our people wanted a wider focus than just a few graduation expectations. They wanted to talk about, they wanted, they were, they were discussing ends is what they were discussing, which is a little bit different than graduation expectations. Because it was, it was, I mean, I had elementary school parents there, there were middle school parents there, there were high school parents there, there were people with no children in the school there. And I tried intentionally to get a wider demographic as possible.
You did a great job with that, through your request. And I think the small slices is that where we are right now with high school graduation is this just, it's this triangle, which is that piece of paper you guys got. And it's just the habits and disposition. It's not content. And I think that that's sort of like, it seems like half a conversation because it really is about who are you as a learner? And how are you gonna approach whatever you're coming up, whether it's physics and math or, you know, what, how are you gonna be a student? And so that's, you know, that's a, you have, we had to keep wrapping it back around to just habits and disposition.
So was the community dinners as a starting point to gather up the first 10 or 12 people, broken down maybe into four or five groups? And have them try to get four or five friends to get a group of 10? Something along those lines?
It might, I don't know if you're gonna get enough people that are gonna be that dedicated to do it. But remember, you'll get 100 to 130 members of our community if it's done right. You know, because we would pitch that to the school as well as just saying, hey, it's a community dinner. And promise them that there will be some type of presentation. You know, you can get 130 people, which the truth is, in Willske, that's, that's a good smattering of the public. You know, is it all-inclusive? Absolutely not. But, you know, I think you're gonna get a wide.
Do you get a good demographic base?
I, I met people down there. I talked to quite a few people, and I met people down there who were new to the city, didn't have any children. There were homeowners, there were parents, there were, there was quite a few younger people, you know.
Yeah, a lot of families with really young kids.
Families with very young children.
Those are, yeah, that's where you wanna.
I thought you've got a decent smattering. And the ones that we know we're not gonna get, like the, I think it's the upper grade levels. Those are the ones that are hard to get the parents to turn out for. We would fo, we would have to focus on that. You know, specifically, I mean, I went around for my family learning conversation, and I printed up a little Mickey Mouse flyer and physically went to people's homes the week before and said, please show up for this. So they've gotta look this sorry soul in the face and tell me no or not, you know what I mean? And people, you know, like I said, I got a dozen. And that was, any more than a dozen, it would've been very ungainly to run this conversation.
Right.
Unless it wouldn't have been worthwhile. So I was very pleased.
So at the community dinner, it is more a solicitation for help than it is for, and, and this is what we would like help with rather than define this for that. Right.
I think it's also a time to gather input because people are starting to hear about the partnership. I think it's also a time to give a presentation and open it up as far as ends and, you know, don't just have it so narrow that it's just these graduation expectations and see where people are coming from.
Okay. I left 45 minutes in the agenda specifically to try to maybe have some of that discussion on what would we out, what could we outline if we wanted to bring something forward? And I was hoping maybe we can get a couple folks to maybe fine-tune it. If we're gonna try to do a community dinner, maybe fine-tune it a little bit more.
Listening to Jay and everything that everyone's talking about, do you think it wouldn't be beneficial for, I mean, we all come from different areas of the school, correct? What about just putting together some kind of postcard or something that we can keep on our persons at all times to be able to, when we see community members and we see an area where we can just chat and say, look, this is what our school is doing, we really love your input, you know, and chat about it?
You mean like the one that the partnership gives so that we can?
But even maybe smaller than that. I think, you know, and like I said, it doesn't even have to be the same questions. It could be, so someone says they're interested in this, and you have that specific thing that you can, you know, write it down. Or more generalized because you don't want it too focused either because it is the ends. But you wanna make it simplified enough so that we can all participate and really reach out. If somebody's walking down the street and they run into somebody walking their dog, or, I mean, those are the community members that you don't always see. And, you know, even at the senior center or church or the businesses, all need to be gathered their input. So.
And I think, you know, kind of piggybacking on what Jen said, I think at a community dinner, when you're talking about ends development, you're going to get our ownership. When you're talking about graduation expectations, you're going to get stakeholders. 'Cause you're going to have teachers, you're going to, 'cause they, they are involved in this. And when we're talking about developing ends, we want our ownership. We don't want our stakeholders. And when you combine the two, you're gonna get both.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know.
Ultimately, you're going to. You've just gotta understand the audience that you have.
Right.
And their.
But to put them both together and getting both, you know, input from stakeholders and the ownership, our, our ends are to be defined by the ownership. The graduation expectations are ownership and stakeholders. So to, to try to, you know, go narrow to broad, you're getting input into both ends and.
I thought the ends were the broad. I thought that is what our ownership or stakeholders, which are everyone involved.
No, the ownership is the, the, the community. The stakeholders are people outside of the community who.
Are involved with students every day.
Right, but they're not the ones who we are answered, you know, that we have to answer to. We have to answer to the ownership.
Technically, she's right.
Right. Teacher, the teacher is a stakeholder until they're a citizen, and then they're, then they're part of the ownership too.
Yeah, and it was very, it was, like I said, it was very interesting in some of these conversations that the graduation expectations were almost sub-ends. You know, people were saying, you know, I, I want my children ready for college and ready for their career. And as you drill down in it, you look and you say, well, there's the critical thinking. That's one of the college readiness standards. You know, there, it, it's, it's like you would have broader ends, and then as you go down the ends, they become more and more focused. That's what I took away from the conversation. And as I go through the ends of other school districts, I see they start with a broad thing of, you know, this is ultimately, right, this is ultimately where we wanna go with our children. And then it starts to focus down in of, these are the specific things. My only concern is, and I just wanna voice this, you know, I wonder how much of the graduation expectations are ends? And how much of them are sort of like a means? A means to that ultimate goal of whatever college and career readiness or preparedness for the next stage of life? You know, things like critical thinking, is that an end in itself? Maybe. It's like a sub-end. You know, so it's something to think about as you're, as we're kind of rolling this around.
Yep, and I think the discussion here in a second, when we start to touch some of these others, I don't know that I wanna sit here tonight and fine-tune a mission statement or fine-tune all the ends. But to go through these others, understand where the, the thought is, at what level each is, is at, and try to work toward fine-tuning it to get something that we wanna bring forward when we do the community dinner, as here's the discussion started. Jen?
Well, I was just saying, like, this is what we could do in our retreat is put all of it together once we have all of the information gathered. So basically, we need to figure out what it is we're asking of the community.
So your answer to the, when do we wanna have this in place is after the retreat in August?
Right. Then you have, then we have the whole day to do this and make sure it's done right.
Put it, to finish it or to put the initial outline together?
To finish it.
With, after getting it, input, community input and boiling it all down?
Because if we do, if the retreat is sort of like an end time, that gives us a deadline for getting more input.
That's exactly where it was going.
We have all summer. We have all summer to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
That would then give us at the beginning of the school year, a, a starting point from which to then again, fine-tune the discussion.
Yeah, feels really good.
That work? Makes sense? Anybody seeing it too aggressive? All right.
Well, again, it's, it's always gonna be a working document, right? I mean, it's just gonna lay down sort of.
A timeline.
It's a timeline so that we can gather some information.
You don't wanna just give yourself a month to gather that kind of information.
No, no.
You want to have an extended time. And it's an ongoing thing, but we can have a majority of that information and get kind of an idea of what the community wants.
I just wanna be right up front with everybody that it is aggressive and it's gonna take work from everybody. So be prepared as, as we go into this, that, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to move along and, you know, kind of hustle a little bit, which is fine.
Yep. So with that, if, I, I've been the one, I've mentioned it twice, I'm not sure I've heard any, but do we wanna start the discussion with a completely blank slate? Or do we wanna try to boil some of these samples down into something that we can actually start with to move forward? At least to get a start. There's pros and cons to each, so there is no right answer.
I think in our, because our community is so different than most, I think it's almost better to go with a blank state, blank slate, and then maybe even have some examples of what we're looking for. But not specific examples. You know what I'm saying? Just to move the conversation on, if you say, what, you know, just, what was the word I'm looking for? Like directing questions, you know, like helping them figure out what it is, the points.
You know, the other thing I would like, and we can have this for the retreat as well, beyond public feedback, I think we need data. Because I think there are things that should influence our decisions, such as like our graduation rate. 'Cause I think that's a focal area.
It doesn't hurt to have it. I mean, I, I think that we know what we want our kids to do. You know, like regardless of the data, we want them to graduate, you know. So I think that it's more of like that sort of future, you know.
I mean, I guess my, my thought process is.
We always have the data, don't we?
With, with data, we can make more intelligent decisions as far as.
Do, the only fear I would have with that is you end up, you could get yourself pigeonholed into something you already have data for rather than trying to figure out how you, what you want first and then figure out how you gather the data. I mean, graduation rates is an obvious one.
Right. Well, I guess my thought process is data drives improvement. If you have information that says X, Y, Z, it should move you along to somewhere that you wanna go.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
I guess that's my, my thought with information.
I just, right, I guess my, my biggest fear there would be that we don't ask for something because we don't think we can get data on it or, or we don't currently have data on it.
Right.
And so I just, I would like to leave this at least wide open until we can funnel it down and see where it goes. But I agree, you gotta be able to get data for all of these ultimately.
Right.
However that forms itself. Thoughts, Amy? Rough draft, blank slate, go in with something that at least guide the discussion? I think you were leaning toward a discussion guider, but not necessarily, here's a mission statement.
I, I.
It's a tough facilitation, by the way.
Yeah, guiding questions.
I, I personally think that going in with a skeleton and, you know, making it a working document that, you know, working, living document that changes as, you know, we get the input. It leaves, gives us, and gives our, our new superintendent something to at least start working with. 'Cause he starts the beginning of July, and if we're not giving him something until around the 1st of September, he has, you know, no ends to which to develop means.
Yeah, I'm thinking August is gonna be pretty aggressive up front, but.
But I mean, we have to give him something to work towards. So even if it's just a.
They're leaning into a rough draft.
Some kind of skeleton, you know, here's a mission statement and a couple of, you know, and as we gather information and things change, you know, we amend it and it, you know, changes. I think some of, I mean, even if you look at. Um, I think some of, I mean, even if you look at some of the examples, you gave the example, you know, I gave. Um, you know, on like. Uh, academic achievements, I mean, Hazen's is all students are expected to meet or exceed state standards in. I mean, that's that's an end. Yeah, and it lists the, you know, the arts, language arts, history and social, I mean, that's pretty broad. There's no, there's no sub-ends to that section.
And and some of the, and some of the ends like that one are pretty safe.
But it gives, it it gives guidance.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it gives guidance and it's safe because everyone should be teaching to the standard anyway. And if you're not, then there's a problem. So that's kind of pretty safe of saying. Students should be proficient in the standards of setting clear goals of saying, you know, this is the way we we wanna go. Um, you know, and this obviously isn't gonna happen overnight, both, I mean, it's, this is gonna be a process. But, you know, again, I, there's merit to what Amy's saying because some of these are are real safe. Other ones are much more broad, like preparing students for their next stage in life or. You know, which seems extremely vague to me of what exactly that means.
Uh, you know, from if you're keeping your ends or your mission statement at least at a high level. That can be pre-K to K, K to one, five to six, nine to ten, twelve to life. Or college or, you know, the workforce, so it really can hit everything along the way. So, a- and it it's kinda pertinent here with one building. And, uh, you know, a couple of seams between, you know, five and six and nine and ten that we've seen. So, all depends how it gets interpreted.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Um, and and this may sway my decision one way or the other, but when are we planning on having this retreat? Because if we do it sooner rather than later, my thought process is. We can, we can start hammering this stuff out and and give the needed direction to the new superintendent. ASAP rather than waiting until, you know, months down the road. Um, and and maybe we don't need a skeleton. Yeah, I get, I guess that's my thought process, one or the other, you know. The retreat's gonna be two or three months away, well, then I'm gonna lean more towards having something in place. Some type of placeholder there and if it's, if the retreat's gonna be soon, then I would say, well, no, we can. We can just start from scratch, cause I think that's a good idea too, cause I agree with Jen. We are very different from other schools.
See, I look at the exact opposite as you do. Is if the retreat is gonna be soon, then we put a skeleton in place and then you have all the time in the world to gather. The the data, there's no, like, we have to do it by the retreat date so we can build this document. Whereas if we put a skeleton in place, then at the retreat, we we have stuff to work on. And come up with, you know, more detailed and in-depth thought process as how to approach our different ownership. Um, groups. To gather that information, come up with, um, the questions that Jen is talking about. Um, Tori is very good with surveys and and putting that kinda stuff, getting something together to put online. Um, and have something to be ready to send send home to parents. You know, come the beginning of school, have something in the district news come the beginning of school. You know, kind of ushering in, hey, this is what we worked on over, you know, the summer and this is what we want your input on. Help us out. Here are all the different ways to do that.
There's merit to that thought process too.
I'm thinking August for retreat is gonna be aggressive to get these things in place if we're gonna end up with five or six different community. Gatherings, consolidate the information, boil it all together. Uh, if we're gonna try to do it in July, I think we're gonna end up rushing it. That would be, would be my thought. You're now middle of May. Um, community dinner, next one would be June or end of May?
There's one in May, probably June.
Do we have one in May still or is?
Um, yeah, there, I think there is one in May.
Okay.
That's in the week or so. Did we edit or go over any of the the placeholder ends when we first got together?
No, we have not touched ends at all yet. We've touched policies two through, two, three and four so far. And and this one, I think, was intentionally left for this discussion at this this point, this way. And do it rather than adopting something.
So it seems like there's two options. We can try to pull it together for August or we can edit a placeholder. And then. Develop our own unique one a little more slowly.
Well, the, I I think what I'm gathering here might work in that it's a little bit of a consolidation of everything and that is. Have the discussion at the community dinner in June, if it's mid-June.
Open or available?
Um, with the guiding questions toward how do you do a mission statement? To spend maybe forty minutes, a half hour or something, talking about the mission statement with maybe some leads of what do you want in there? Um, and then getting also a discussion, leading that discussion in for a half hour into. What are the categories of the ends that we want, that we are looking for? Um, like, just some of these is is global awareness, uh, financial, economic, entrepreneurial literacy. Uh, health literacy, uh, you know, those real high level items and then. Gather that up a- after a brainstorming session, filter it out and then try to get names. In that dinner of folks that would help us to fine tune that further. And then over the balance of June and into the middle of July, have four or five discussions on how do you fine tune those? So then when we get into August, we're pretty well down to, here's what we've got. And, you know, i- is any of this completely unmeasurable? Can you just not do anything with this? And then, uh, cause I think after August, we are still gonna have a significant amount of work to do to fine tune as we go forward. Not a, not, you know, we're not gonna blow it up and start over, but I think there's gonna be still some significant work left to do to. To get it to where we want it to be.
And I think a lo- another large portion of that is, um, the new superintendent figuring out. Exactly how to interpret that and then once the interpretation comes in, how, what are the measurements? Um, because that's gonna be a very interesting, you know, especially with proficiency-based learning. Measurements are.
It is.
Tricky.
If you believe though, that all of that will be in place September one when we start school, we're gonna have to reset an expectation set. Right, so so I just, you know, setting that that expectation in that time horizon is gonna be key.
Yeah, cause the the Graduation Expectation Committee is a year and a half endeavor.
Right.
You know, it's not, it's not ending anytime soon.
But it's always gonna be focusing and focusing and focusing. Focusing itself and the direction of of what we do. Does that work? We can have, uh. Let's see if we can get into the next community dinner, the June one. We'd have three or four weeks to. Have somebody try to understand what, where we wanna lead. The discussion or how? Having a large posters, handouts, whatever, questions.
We need to have.
Questions on paper.
We need to have two things. Number one, somebody needs to set it up with with Kate Nugent.
Right.
Um, and then the other thing is we need to have s- something that's somewhat coherent to to pitch to people.
Doesn't our families school partnership implementation team need some sort of thing to do? You know, like a end of the year, you know what I mean? Like in terms of getting families together to discuss it. I'm just thinking of like different partnerships of helping us sorta get there. But we can talk about that later, but I can, um, email Kate Nugent and see what the status is.
To see if there's availability.
Yeah.
And either, uh, uh, May is obviously gonna be way too quick to get in together, but. Okay, so, so Tori, you're gonna talk to Kate?
Yeah.
And who wants to work on trying to put an outline at least for the discussion on where we wanna go with it? Should, I think it's gotta have something that you can put into somebody's hands or something that they can look at and read or both.
And I'd volunteer, but my plate's extremely full right now, guys. I apologize.
I'll take a piece of that if somebody else wants to join me. I don't wanna put the.
I'll join you.
Full input.
Cause I can only do half of everything.
So, and I think that one is just basically getting a an outline together on what it is we're trying to do. What we need help with, what are the starting points, um, and then let the discussion go where it may.
And I would definitely have, um, you know, the partnership did a great job of having. Sections of very short questions or statements, this is what an, like, this is what an ends is. Da 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 da, and then areas where they can write. And we'll make sure we bring tons of writing implements and tons of those and get. Get people to start writing this stuff down and hand it back in and, you know. So then, and then at that point, we could start, there, that's another section of data that I'm talking about. Where, you know, if you've got sixty, seventy, eighty flyers you've gotten back and everybody is saying the same thing or. Or you have a large portion moving in a certain direction, that should really inform you, you know, us. So as you guys develop this, just just a a quick hint to you, that's that's what they do. You're looking for the public's. You're not herding sheep so much as putting out there what we're looking for and seeing what they have to say.
If we're gonna be giving this presentation at this dinner, are we gonna have translators?
Yeah, that was the next, that's why I asked if it was a pretty broad base community. I gotta believe it is, right?
Well, Kate could probably answer that question, couldn't she?
How many, how many, uh, different interpreters do we have? I know we've got, uh.
Um, on staff, we've got.
They cover how many different languages?
Vietnamese, Somali, Mymy, um, Bosnian and Nepali.
Okay, that sounds like it hits a pretty good cross-section of our larger populations, right? Okay, so we may wanna just touch base with Kate to see if. Is that, you're right, th- you definitely want, you don't wanna go through that without in time.
And you might wanna have those forms translated too.
We'll go see Guy, seems to.
Yeah, something for that and I I would also recommend, I like Jen's idea and and something that I did. Come up with some type of little, doesn't have to be much, a little brochure. That we can pitch the date on and personally ask people. It means something when a member of your school board asks you personally to show to something. Please come, I value your opinion, the board would like to hear your opinion, blah blah blah.
Okay, so I think the rest of what I had in here was intended. Um. As a boiling of the next pieces, but I think what I'm just hearing is that we'll we'll forego that. We'll try to put a higher level guide together and then move through it, okay? Um. Last thoughts for tonight at least on ends development, any? Other movement?
No, just, yeah, I'm really looking forward if we, if we can make that board to ownership linkage. We'll be, we'll we'll be doing something that many other policy governance boards in the state. Struggle mightily with.
Uh, but that's not just for this occurrence.
No, not just for this occurrence, but.
Long term.
It's gotta be, but if we can get something rolling, you know, we can get momentum perhaps.
Yep, okay. Good, um, down to. Um, executive limitations, uh, monitoring. We touched last time on, uh, the use of facilities. And it's tied to the charter and our need to not have, um, eliminated that. Um. Policy. We also talked again about, uh, the other one that we had, which was the, uh, transportation. Policy, I believe. Left the transportation policy in. The first reading, uh, down below under, um.
That one's on the consent agenda?
That was in the consent agenda, okay, right. Uh, because it is gonna be the first reading in under the consent agenda. The use of facilities and it tied to charter, I left it out. To ask the question, have we already covered it in policy? Do we, have we already covered that item in policy?
Would you find out, Mary?
Um, well, I sent everything to people.
Right.
Um, but basically, I I, uh, looked at the charter language. And then I looked at the ballot and it was the same language on the ballot. So, under policy governance, um, it would fall, the current. Facilities policy, it would fall under policy two point six in policy governance. So, if you look at two point six, which is.
Asset protection.
Yeah.
Right.
It's there and, um, we could keep. The procedures that are in the current policy one, three, three O, which we would be rescinding. As our procedures, if we make some amendments. So, I mean, I think that, um, policy two point six covers the charter under executive limitations.
You wouldn't change it at all? You wouldn't reference the charter or the annual vote?
I think it's covered.
Don't think it's necessary.
I think it's covered and the only thing I would make is what I put in the note that I sent out. The amendments to the procedures, if you look at number one, I would remove school board action required under group categories three and four. Um, remove number sixteen, which, um. Basically talks about exception to this policy may only be granted by the school board of trustees. Um, number twenty-six. I asked, is that something that the board wants to continue? To look at or are they going to delegate that to the superintendent? And then the application, we would just fix and get rid of the policy number one, three, three O at the top. The header and then the same on the second page. So, just looking at policy two point six, it seems to cover everything under executive limitations.
Right, so I think two, two pieces first, do you believe we've got it covered under policy? Under, and two six is the one that would cover an asset protection? So, two, two six two says allow uninsured personnel access to material amounts of funds, but that's, uh. Uh, subject to facilities and equipment improper wear and tear or in insufficient maintenance. So the the wear and tear is there for the use, whatever the use is. Um. Unnecessarily expose the organization, its board and its staff to claims of liability. That's one of your other concerns with the use of facilities.
Well, we we always ask for proof of insurance.
Yep.
Yeah, no, two point six, looks like it's got it covered.
Yep.
And they knew the organization's public image credibility, ability to accomplish its ends. I think in general, the two six seems to cover everything we need.
And you would just change your, your.
Well, it's, this policy, one, three, three O would be rescinded.
Right.
We still have it.
Right, but you.
And then we would keep the procedures in place, cause it really has everything in there and then we would continue to use the form.
Well, then I move that we rescind policy one, three, three O.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of rescinding policy one, three, three O?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then when we do have the procedures. Okay, and then when we do have the procedures in place, you utilize basically that's, that outline and. Make the changes. That cover it, down below. What was number twenty-six here, I missed that?
It was um waiving the fees. That the school board, um. The school board has the option of waiving or reducing facility rental custodial fees at their discretion for groups that benefit Winuski students. And so my question was, is that something that the board wishes to keep? Number twenty-six or delegate that to the superintendent? Cause again, it involves money.
It's a very, very low amount.
Yeah.
But I think if it's left in the hands, uh, Jake, go ahead.
You know, it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's still a means. That the superintendent is there to carry that out and if they're doing it properly, then the board really shouldn't have their hand in it.
And properly as consistently over time, which is in the hands of, hands of one person. Any other thoughts? Concerns, okay. Very good. And then um. Under uh, the other, the other one under five B then is the waiver, tuition waiver requests.
So, yeah, and i- if you look at the top of the monitoring report, it should be three.
Yep, and it's three and a third section there, yep.
So, there are three students and given that we only have six weeks left, I think it's in the best interest of the students. To let them finish the school year.
We have voted on that?
Yeah, you should take action on it, cause it's a special monitoring report.
Alright, cause I seem to, although I had, did have the consent agenda, wouldn't those normally be under the consent?
Mm-mm.
Not there, okay.
This has to go on the special monitoring report because of policy two point three. And it's outside executive limitations.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, all those uh in favor of accepting the tuition. Uh, waiver requests for the three noted in the.
Do we have a motion?
Five B?
No.
I don't think we do, I, I, I would accept a motion.
Oh, okay.
I moved, I said moved to accept.
To accept the tuition waiver requests.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um. So I had set for the governance process, I had set twenty minutes aside. Um, for continued discussion on the self-evaluation uh process definition. I've included a couple of different monitoring reports, but I did pass along from Val Gardner. Five documents that pretty much laid out our last discussion in pretty good, in pretty good uh. Detail as far as monitoring our um. Adherence to the policy governance. Uh, methods in, in a, in a particular meeting. And then over time, are we following through with the, the policy governance? Thought process, so that once a year or so, we're gonna monitor ourselves on, we're gonna measure ourselves as to how we've been doing. So, I thought her package, they led down through pretty well with all the, all of that um. Flow as, as we go through the year, so hopefully that was uh at least helpful in. Define, deciding on our, uh, helping define that flow. I sent that out, uh, I believe it was last Thursday. With regards to the um. Self-evaluation process, that's just how did we do, how did we do today? Against what we've said we would do, and there's two, two forms in here under six, A, that got it, that got put in. I'm just wondering thoughts.
Well, the second one's definitely more detailed.
Okay, and that. Rates us for, from we failed to met our best expectations. With unacceptable, acceptable and commendable in the process. I think in general, they both kind of aim at the same piece and that is, did we follow the agenda, did we follow the? The thought process as we went down through. Uh, was everybody prepared? Did we listen to different points of view? Did we consider different points of view? And everybody gave input, kinda.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, are these something we wanna do every month and then take them and compile them for quarterly review or yearly review?
That would be part of the yearly.
Because I would say if you were going to do one of these, then because of the nature of every given month is different. You'd want the second one, because it actually allows you not only to view the actual meeting, but how we're doing with our policy governance. So it gives you both those options rather than just the overall general.
Yep. And it actually touches both, right, general meeting behavior, how do we, how do we behave when we're in a meeting and how?
And then it, and how we're working with the policy governance.
Right.
And I would say we should review quarterly. Not just yearly, otherwise you can have a whole year go by with things not really doing well, so you should do a check-in.
Okay, that's fair.
Uh, the board assess, assessment is very confusing to me because it's not a monitoring report. And I guess. At the policy governance um training. We're supposed to monitor at least annually each one of our policies. And we write an interpretation of it. There's information we have with it and this is kinda just like a hodgepodge of. I don't know what it is.
No, so, yeah, okay, so, yeah, you're. Yep, you're definitely right, um. Let me dig up one piece, because the, the answer is both, um. We do, um. Dig this up here for a second. The um. We're, we're really looking at two, two different pieces, one is the process, how the meetings are run and the board behavior. Cause that in and of itself is one of the pieces of policy governance that we're measuring ourselves to. Is that we're actually sticking to the process. Like, that is one piece, and that's this, this would be for that monitoring report. The other one is.
I guess I'm a little confused.
One of the items is, is how are the meetings run and what, is the behavior of the board? Is, as our beha- behavior, what we want it to be with regard to policy government, are we micromanaging means?
You're saying on a month, this is the monthly one you're talking about?
The monthly one after, o- over time is gonna tell you whether you're focusing on the right things or not.
Okay.
The other piece of that is actual achievement, are we actually getting to, we, we've set a goal tonight. That says that by August, we're gonna have a pretty solid foundation for policy one, which is ends. That's one of the first goals that we've got. Over the course of the next year, we're gonna have, or even less than that, six months, we're gonna get monitoring reports in place. We're gonna start moving through those. And, you know, those, are we monitoring the things we need to monitor? Is, you know, part of the rest of what we're trying to do, not all of it, but. And that's, that is um. Part of our board evaluation is, is are we doing this? Are we running the meetings and is our behavior aimed at ends and the, and the place we need it to be?
You can use these checklist as your data.
Well, yeah, and I understand that, but.
Compile it and then do your quarterly report.
Each, right, but each policy gets, gets a monitoring document at least annually.
Right.
Three point one, three point two.
But that would be the superintendent writing those monitoring reports and the board.
No, not, not for the threes and the fours.
Okay.
The board writes those. And, and like, it's, it's interesting, like, here's an example of like a unity of control.
Can I ask you a question first, we go, are you saying that there needs to be more of a, the way that it looks as a progress monitoring report?
Well, that's, well, that's what it is, and what you do is, you would, you would interpret it. Um, you, you write interpretation just like the superintendent would for one of their policies.
Interpretations on, on our, you know, how, how we're doing through the principles and.
Well, the interpretations on what the policy physically says. And then you gather data, things like meeting minutes, things like our month, if we were gonna do monthly things, you would gather that together as your evidence.
Right.
Good, bad, indifferent, whatever it is, and then annually on each one of these policies, the board, the board says, okay, under unity of control. Did the board follow its policy of basically staying out of the superintendent's business is what that policy happens to say. But, but, and then you would come back and, and, and look at data and see, you know, over the course of meeting minutes. And over the course of our monitoring reports, oh, wait a minute, back in September, we decided to, like, remember, what was it, last month or the month before? Thou let us go along and, and we decided to figure something out instead of letting the superintendent do it.
Discussion on meetings.
That would have been, if we would have been monitoring ourselves, by all rights, that should have shown up in annual data of saying, oh, wait a minute. Back in April, we decided we were gonna discuss the whole thing and not leave it to the superintendent. So we, we would get a ding on that, on a specific thing of unity of control.
Right.
And, and it's not, it's.
Let me just key off that one just for a second though, that is, that is one that you don't wanna wait until next April. To say we didn't do this, because then you've done it ten months in a row potentially before you finally decide that that's probably not right.
Yes, and you would try to collect or correct that on a monthly basis, but in the annual report, you end up with in compliance. In substantial compliance, impartial compliance, or not in compliance at all. So annually, you would look and say, well, we stumbled in April, but boy, look at this May through December, we did great. Or whatever, and you would see that.
But, but part of the monitor, monthly monitoring reports are aimed at making sure you don't make those same mistakes month after month. And it is a debrief that says, this is what we thought today, these are the things we touched on, these are the things we probably shouldn't have touched on.
So it seems like there's two different structures. So there's the monthly one, which is sort of to get us going, did I remember this from last, uh, the last time that there would be? We would do it a little bit more frequently, like after every meeting, as we're getting the habits of how we interact here with policy governance.
Correct.
And then there's the quarterly or yearly report that we actually pull together based on. These sort of check sheets.
Right.
Or these checklist, so we're looking at two specifically different.
And the annual, and the annual one has another purpose as well. Not only does it give us a long-term look back of saying how well or how poorly we did. But it's also really an opportunity for the board to assess the policy and say, hmm, you know what? This section of it is not working for us.
And then, but what our conversation right now is about is sort of this check sheet, sort of this sort of monthly.
Well, you're talking about both, right?
It ultimately both, one is the monthly as you go along, how did we do tonight?
These to me look like, something like.
That is correct.
Like, ding, 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 ding.
The summary of a dozen of these is used for your annual.
Then we put it together, you know.
How did we do, looking back?
This is the data that backs up the monitoring report.
So, two different things, so we're trying to choose between these two in terms of just like the monthly.
Well, these are, the, that's, that's right, these two are the same monthly kinda check sheet, but I think Jen's comment was that these. Get into a different level than the, the second one gets into a different level. Than, than the first one does.
Yeah.
Okay, any uh reason why we wouldn't adopt the second one? For starters, we've got the first one, we can come back to if we ever find we should need to.
And so which one are you calling the second one?
So this is under.
It starts with board's self-assessment.
So that's, that's the two pages?
The two pages is number two.
The two-page one, right.
Gotcha.
Looks at the general meeting behavior and then the govern- governance principles review.
Yeah, five-point scale.
Right. Hopefully you got a middle, without a middle, but. Question two, if that's the case. And we can, we can adjust it as we go if it doesn't hit something, that's, these are not cast in concrete. So. If we can agree to use the, the two-part one, the question then becomes. From a monitoring perspective. There's a couple of different methods, one is to have one person do it for several months in a row. For consistency, so part of their eye and part of their ear during a meeting is toward evaluating us on how we're doing. The other one is to have us all do it and use kinda the average of the piece, of the. So, thoughts on?
My only question with both of these. And I read through them fairly well, is, does this cover every single thing that we're gonna run into under three and four?
Never.
Is that possible?
Never.
So, so there may be ancillary data that's included in our monitoring reports that will not be in the board's self-assessment.
You always put comments at the bottom.
You can't have a form long enough to cover everything.
Okay.
There's, that's not gonna happen.
That was my only question.
But that's why I said, this thing is not set in concrete, it is movable, it's changeable, as is everything we're gonna do. To the degree, to the degree that it obviously doesn't match, I mean, if it's just because we don't like it, that's a difference.
It can also be, uh, as with everything in policy governance, a working document, you know, you can add a thing there if we feel like.
Or take it out.
Pumping up or taking it out too, it just gives us a form to start with. So do we need to, we need to vote on this?
Um, I think we just adopt it at this point, I'm not sure we really need to vote on it.
Okay.
But I think the other piece of it though is, do we wanna, I, do we wanna have everybody do one? And then try to summarize them, or do we want one person to go down through their views of how we did against this? And a couple of, I'm thinking maybe two to three meetings in a row, so you at least understand the form and the comments by the. To get some consistency through, through time. And then maybe roll it through us each quarter or something.
I think we all should fill one out.
I agree with Amy.
Just like we do the, the evaluations, you know, you look at where the, the numbers fall and try to.
Put them all back together and, okay.
And then as we get more confident about, we could change the process, you know, maybe one person a month does it or something, yeah.
That, that way we, we get that reasonable interpretation.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the other suggestion I would have, if, if we're, we're really happy with the board's self-assessment one, the two-page one. Is at the bottom of the second page or beginning of a third page.
Comments.
That we would have comments section, so that way if we're checking that, you know, the, the down to bottom. The board supports the superintendent and any reasonable interpretation and one of us feels, well, no, we didn't do that, then that should be explained. I know when we do an annual monitoring report, if you check anything else other than. Uh, in compliance, you, under, under most districts' monitoring reports, you must put comments. You must say, and this is the data I have saying that we're not in compliance or we are in compliance or whatever. But they, they mandate it, if you're, you know, cause, cause you wanna grow from it.
Um, one other piece though, um, I would like to recommend that we move this to a four-point scale. Rather than five. Reasoning, my only reasoning there is, if you get something that's in three, you have no idea if that's good or bad. If you have a four-point scale, the top two and the bottom two at least separate where, the directionally where you are. But if you've got a middle one in three and everybody, and somebody just puts all threes, it really, you have nothing there. It's either leaning left or it's leaning right.
Hand wave.
Or it's, it's, yeah, there's no, no shake, no handshake here.
Oh, you know the wave.
That, so is, does that, anybody have, real partial to having a, a middle?
An incredible five-point scale.
Which, to me is a, yeah.
So you would just eliminate acceptable?
And, and, yeah, maybe just jam them together.
Or even eliminate commendable.
I was gonna, well.
It's up to you guys.
Unacceptable and we failed are kinda on the same plane, right, those, those are both hitting the bottom, so. Uh, uh, yeah, I can, I, you know, we didn't meet it, barely met it. We met it and then we exceeded or whatever, some, something along. We met it, and then we exceeded or whatever, some, something along, does that work? So that we don't hit that middle, 'cause later on, if you end up with only a three for an average, you don't know whether you're good or bad.
Uh, when do we do these, and when do we turn them in? And who correlates the data?
So what, which number are we getting rid of?
Well, Jay, you're the secretary.
We're, well, we're gonna get rid of three, but we'll rework.
That's not gonna cut on this one.
Absolutely, it does, we voted, we wanted it, it's yours.
I could be resigning from that position very, very quickly.
We'll just revote it and guess what, you got it back.
So the other piece is feedback. Before we get to the, to the who actually correlates them. The other piece is if you give feedback a month from now.
It's no good.
It's less valuable than if you do it tonight. If you do it tonight, it's gonna take you the time to do the evaluation and do the thought, so. Any, with that as a background, any thoughts on how we would wanna close this out, we can put an agenda section. We can spend, we can carve out the last ten minutes.
Yeah. I think for the first couple of meetings that we've been doing, I think that we should, it would be a good practice. To sort of just get, you know, that language and sort of assessing ourselves for at least three meetings, just to.
I'll do it at the end.
You know, and then decide, you know, if we wanna continue having it be the last ten minutes. But, that's my, that's my opinion, my thought.
My thought process is, I wonder how should we run into a eye-bleeding, long meeting, which happens on occasion.
And the feedback would be, hits way too long.
Right, exactly, um, you know, I understand that, but how, how much are we going to? Put our best effort into this, rather than putting a deadline and saying that things gotta be electronically turned into whoever within forty-eight hours.
Um, I, I would rather have it in paper sitting next to me that I can jot stuff down on. And hand it in.
I hear that.
Yeah.
At the end.
As it's going.
Yeah.
Because if I'm sitting here trying to type, I'm not listening to you, whereas I'm looking at you and jotting stuff down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
And then we just discuss it the last ten minutes or something, probably, yeah.
So Sandy, if I get that form that we're talking about to you, is there a way we can get five copies or six copies to? Hard copies when we come in? To each meeting?
Yeah.
That's something that I know.
I believe I have, I, I already have the form.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so we're talking, we're talking about the two, the two-piece ones, so, yeah, if you could do that, then we could all.
We have to add the comment section.
Yep, yep, I can add a comment section and adjust the scale, but it is a soft copy that you have that we can update, it was in Word, I believe, so we can edit it. So I'll, I'll edit the, the scale, the, the, the key is not the words exactly on a scale, it's that. You've got no middle ground, you don't have that middle ground, and so I'll put some words in there from. Some past, uh, surveys and we can talk about what, what those are when, when we get in. Okay. So we use, uh, ten minutes at the end to do a debrief on the meeting.
Um, Mike, would it make sense instead of using acceptable, unacceptable, whatever? Use the same words that we put at the top of the evaluations that we use? You know, almost, always, never, what?
The only concern I would have with that kind of wording is that's more of a long-term summary. Kind of word, we either met it, ultimately, we either met our thing or we didn't. And so I'm, I'm kinda thinking that there's, we exceeded what we expected to do, we met it, we didn't quite meet it, or we failed. Though, that, that's the kind of, it's, I think the language, tho- those words that you have are more of a summary over a long period of time, I think.
Do you?
We could put them in, it's, again, it's just a matter of breaking those top two and the bottom two.
Or would you tie it like, like a lot of districts do to the same language that you have in a monitoring document?
I think that's.
In compliance, in substantial compliance, impartial compliance, or non-compliance?
That's the ones?
That's the ones.
Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about.
If you use the same language.
All right, we can, we can use that. Do, you have those right handy that you can?
I do.
Send them to Sandy and just adjust the master?
I do.
Nearly the other thing we wanted to do is put a comments section at the bottom, so we had space. Okay, um. Anything else on the evaluation, we'll have to see how that goes and we'll, part of the debrief will be anything we need to change, so we'll continue moving with that. Item section, item section, item seven, I'm sorry, I spent, I started my morning in Pennsylvania, so.
I spend lots of time there.
Yeah, mine was through Western New York today, so I'm a little scattered. Uh, governance processes, we just finished global governance management connection, uh. Accepting the contract for Sean McManon, with that in a public forum, I would accept a motion to accept the contract.
It wasn't in my attachments.
Uh, I had sent that out, uh, also as a separate attachment.
Oh, yeah. On the twenty-second? No.
Uh, let me see. Uh, where was it? Did not, did I?
Nope.
Okay, um.
You don't, you don't get it in the screen.
Uh. Do you guys w- wanna do that tonight, or, 'cause I can certainly send it to you soft copy if you wanna take the time to.
Yeah, can we just go and do it tonight?
What's that?
Can we just go and do it tonight?
Yeah, I can send it if you guys wanna read through, we can finish the agenda. Take time to read through that, I believe the negotiation update in executive session will be relatively quick. So that I don't believe.
We have anything to report. We haven't met since we last had a meeting, have we?
I thought we met one time after, like the very following Monday.
Minutes, there's not a lot to report.
Okay, and then we'll have some time that we can finish that. So let me send it, and then we can finish. So after that, then we had the, um. Consent agenda?
Well, Mike, you didn't attach it.
Didn't?
So consent agenda?
No, the contract.
Didn't come through?
Did he?
Um, I'm sorry, I just. Uh, no, you didn't attach it.
Okay, well, that's all that was in there, so if I didn't attach it, try it again. Okay. So that'll be in a minute, and we'll take the time again to, we can go through it. Um, so on the consent agenda? Any, uh, had accept a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So vote?
Second, okay, any discussion on the contents? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And reports and incidental reports, uh, Mary, anything to add to yours?
Yeah, just a couple of things, um, so in my report, I attached a special monitoring report. Or I talked about the special monitoring report from last month regarding the PTO and the boosters and the federal ID number.
Mm-hmm.
So we did, um, Rebecca and I did talk with, um. The groups and explained everything, Jim also went over everything with them. And we had developed an MOU where the district would take over the management of the parent group checking accounts. So that we were in compliance while they were getting their, um, nonprofit status.
Mm-hmm.
And so we did get an email back, um, saying that the groups decided that. They would continue to manage their own funds, so they had notified the bank, given the banks their new federal ID numbers. Um, and they're still working through to get their nonprofit status. So, um, basically, they're not on our account anymore.
So that piece then is back in compliance.
So we are in compliance. Um, the other, just some end of the year things that are coming up. We have, um, had kneecap testing this week for eighth grade and eleventh grade science. Um, and then the eleventh grade will have one day next week. The senior projects exposition is coming up May twenty-fourth. And, um, seniors will be presenting from ten to eleven. Two-thirty to three-thirty, there will be an open house. If the community would like to come in and look at the projects, and then three-thirty to four-thirty is the awards ceremony. Also, this week, the VTAP, which is an assessment for children that have disabilities. Who cannot participate in kneecap assessment due to the degree of the disability. That is being completed this week, those are submitted to the agency of education and they're scored in the summer. Last summer, I was a scorer, and, um, so you look at all of this, the, of the portfolios from the state. And really measure how students did meeting those goals. So, um, we have that that's wrapping up. We did get, um, notified about our AYP for special education. Um, and what happens with special ed is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the reauthorization of two thousand and four. Requires every single state to have state performance targets. And, um, there are fourteen of those targets. And so Winuski was the only district in the state of Vermont to meet indicator three. Which is around assessment, and the state had set a target that. Um, the proficiency percentage for children with IEPs on reading assessments would be twenty-eight percent. That was the state target, Winuski, um, hit thirty. And then the proficiency percentage for children with IEPs on math assessments, the state target was twenty-five percent. And Winuski hit twenty-eight point three-three. Our participation rate for children with IEPs in math and reading was a hundred percent. And the state rate, the target, was ninety-nine point two-five. So, just, um, what we talked about is. This isn't just a result of the work that's happening in special education, just like we don't point the finger when our. Subgroups do not make AYP. Um, we also celebrate the fact that this effort was collaborative and it was shared district-wide. So it really speaks to the professional development that's happening, K-12, with everyone working together. So that we don't have separate camps, special ed and regular ed, we really are trying to work as, um. A collaborative district, and so that speaks to it, and Robin, um, works really hard with the principals to make sure that that work happens. So, um, something for Winuski to be proud of, we were the only district to meet that indicator in the entire state. Um, now, there were other indicators we didn't meet, but that one's a pretty important one.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congrats.
Congrats, Robin.
Commendable.
Well, as I said, it's, it's, and Mary's right, it's the good first instruction, it's the PD that helps strengthen that. It's, you know, the supplemental, it's everybody together.
Um, just a couple of other things, the administrators and guidance counselors, we completed a two-day training. Around bullying and harassment as required by the agency, um, we adopted the policy last fall. So now we've completed our training, the next step for next year is that the district will need to look at curriculum. Um, and then just partnership for change, I know Amy talked about, um. Some things, just another report out, the Noble High School site visit, that happened. There was a group that went two days at Noble High School in Maine to look at their school design, team teaching. And the one-to-one that they have integrated through the school.
The school design, the physical layout?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, there also was a trip to Rhode Island, and that was really something that students led and coordinated. And what they were looking for is to see more student leadership and more diverse groups of students connecting with one another. So there were forty applications that had been received from students to the partnership, and twelve students were selected to travel. To Rhode Island, um, so they saw internships, they saw, um, students taking on a lot of the responsibility. For their learning that typically in traditional models falls on teachers. Jay and Tori talked a lot about the neighborhood learning conversations, those are still happening. Um, right now, year two is being looked at, so the steering committee, the executive committee. They're working on budget, um, there will be some carryover from money from this year. There is a new partnership website that's up and running. Um, the fellow, the new fellows, that cohort will be introduced, they're in the process of transitioning. And our new director, Hal Colston, really looked at the year that's gone by and talked about the great work. And there's been great work that's been done, there's been a lot of work, but the challenge for next year is to really focus the work. So, that's where we're at moving ahead. So, that is it.
Thank you, any other comments? Okay, um, we've gotten a motion to accept a consent agenda, I'm sorry, we did the consent agenda, reports and incidentals, uh. Do we need to accept those, there's nothing in there, right?
Yeah.
Uh, next agendas, I pulled out of this agenda, the annual. Um, planning, monthly planning agenda, I'm about halfway through that at this point, so I'll have that in a. I'll have that into June as a outline for what we can move forward with, and then, uh. But other, other items for the agenda, ends development will be obviously another piece, others. Okay, nothing. We'll continue ends development, we'll review the annual, annual, uh, outline for meetings. Um, do we plan to meet in July? We have once and we haven't once in my two years.
Because you're gonna have a new superintendent that you have a July meeting, it's gonna be a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second month of the, second month.
Second, yeah, second Wednesday.
Okay.
All right. Um, I would accept the motion to move into executive session for the negotiations update. And we'll come out and.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.